This is the June 30th meeting of the Vicksburg Warren Board of Trustees. At this time, I would like to invite Minister Michelle Johnson to lead us in the invocation, please.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here today to pray. If you would bow your heads with me. Dear gracious Father, God, I thank you for this opportunity to pray. God, I ask you to be here with the board as they make decisions that drive the destinies of our children. God, we thank you for the protection that you've given our school district, our children, even at home, Lord God. This summer, God, we thank you for your hand of protection around them. And Lord, we thank you for the programs that you've given us, Lord God, the outstanding things that have been done in our community. So we ask you, Lord God, right now, to guide and to lead what they're going to discuss tonight. God, you be here among them, Lord God, and lead them into the right decisions that will continue to push our community forward. Again, Lord, protect them, protect the faculty, protect the staff and the children most of all, Lord. And I ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you very much for being here.
Okay, we'll go C1, the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with one correction that we, I don't know how, what the proper way to word this brings, but to take out of order and handle the 16th section issues before the superintendent's report. Since we have a large agenda and we have a lot of people here that are here for the opening of those bids.
Okay, one second. So that's going to be M1?
Move M1 and take it up right before the superintendent's report. Would that be amenable? Is my motion to accept that agenda?
You can, yeah, make the motion to adopt the agenda with that change.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the change of moving M1 to be addressed right before the superintendent's report.
D2 or E1?
Make it D2.
D2.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
But these actually approve of minutes.
So you want the superintendent's report?
Just move it to the, just the new item. Everything else is bumped down. So it'll be, M1 will just be moved, amended to be in place or following D1.
Okay, okay. That's my motion.
All right, have the motion on the floor. Any second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? That motion is approved. All right, so Mr. Pratt, will you take D1, please?
Yes, I will. So board members, you have before you the agenda, I mean, the minutes from our last board meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes from our June, I mean, pull it up, hold on, don't let me lie to you, for our May 20th, Friday, May 20th meeting, or 19th meeting, excuse me, Thursday, May 19th meeting? Any additions or deletions? If there are none, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented for May 19th regularly scheduled for.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? C1 has been approved. All right, so we will now jump in the agenda to M1. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Is that you? You weren't quite expecting it this quick, were you?
I'll get a layer of J-10 there. Best I got is a pencil spray.
All right, these are the 16th section leases. Our first lease, we'll go in the order that's listed in our packet. First lease that I've got is for 16175E. That's section 16, township 17 North Range 5E. And there's a couple of these that are sealed and I'll need to open the packages to determine what section they are. Does not have written on the outside, so we set it aside. Got one for 16175E, so no. Let me open these others to see if they're the same section. All right, the only one on the outside that's marked 16175E is this one. Ms. Lewis, do you have a minimum bid amount for these? First bid we've got with bid proposal is from Thomas Sanders, the Thomas G. Sanders, and that's the Sanders Hunting Club. Minimum bid on this one was $16,037.50. This bid is $16,037.50. There is certified funds, the amount of 10% of the bid, and this bid does appear to be in order. So we've got one bid on that track. I've got, as I mentioned, two others over here that do not have sections. I'm going to open those to see if they're on the same section. This one. This one does not clearly state which section it is. But I do not, the Mount Auburn Club, is anyone here from the Mount Auburn Club? Mount Auburn Hunt Club? Lamar Barnett, Mount Auburn Hunt Club. It's a bid in the amount of apparently $6,855. No other accompanying documentation, so don't know what bid that applies, what section that applies to. So it appears that we only have one bid, and that's for the Sanders Hunting Club, that amount of $16,037, $16,037.50. It does meet the minimum bid requirement, and it does appear to be in order. So the recommendation and the motion, if you...
Make a motion that we accept the bid received for Sanders Hunting Club, $16,037.50.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, next bid that I see is, next track is 16, section 16, 16 North 5 East.
There's two on our list here. Is there a difference between those two?
The first one is a $2,500 minimum lease. The other one was $500. I don't know what tracks those are.
Track two is 25 minimums, $2,500, and track three is $500.
Okay.
Okay.
I've got, is anyone here from Gulf Coast Hunting Club? Gulf Coast Hunting Club. I've got two of these that don't say what track they are, but these two, the one that I just mentioned and this one, just reference 16 section land. And so I don't know if any way we can qualify what tracks they apply to.
So 16165? That's one upcoming question?
That's both, the next two are 16165.
All right, so 16165 is bisected by I-20. So you've got property on the south side of I-20 and property on the north side of I-20. I'm guessing that the $2,500 minimum is going to be the east half of section 16.
It's track two.
That's track two, east of the golf course.
But he's saying that the bids...
That the bids don't say what the bids are for. The bids are not documented.
They didn't put in, like, for instance, the Sanders, we identify, they wrote it like
they're supposed to, and out the side of the envelope, and they've identified exactly what they're bidding on these two. This one has got a check and nothing else, as does this one from, got the Gulf Coast Hunting Club and the Mount Auburn Hunt Club.
So is there no bid for this?
Just unless they're here to identify, I can't tell which one it is.
Mr. Green, that might be just a payment that didn't say, you know, sealed and did not say what it indicated on there. So that one that just shows the check, that just might be our payment.
Shouldn't be, because it should be based on the advertisements that we did.
Okay.
Let's get down, I've got another one from Lincoln Lumber Company. They've identified section 15, 14 North 4 East, and that does not match with any of the ones that we've advertised for bids.
Nope.
So I'm afraid that one's going to have to be rejected, too. All right, moving on to the very last one, section 2117 North 4 East. This bid is from Benny Grantum, and there is a check only for $950. This is care of the Knop Hunting Club, which appears to be, which is 21750. But there's no sheet with it. I don't know what happened this time around, but there's no sheet with it. It appears that they're bidding $9,500, because they got 10% certified funds here, but they don't have a bid sheet for me to be, to know if they're actually bidding that amount of money. So that bid does not appear to be in order.
Appears not to be.
None of the other three, they have bids that are in order? We got people in the audience.
Anybody, Benny Grantum?
No. We've got a bid on track four. You said that was the last one?
For Goat Hill Hunting Club? Do you have?
1684 West.
It's not identified. I just got a check. I've never had this, I don't think I've ever had a couple of people just send checks in. They didn't fill out a bid sheet.
I put mine in an envelope with the letter, fell off the voucher from the section, printed on the envelope.
What's on this ticket here?
It was handled. Okay, when I wrote the check, it was a check. 520. This one's all certified, too. I've never hit the lady in there that accepts the year of payment.
Ms. Wansley? Did you give it to Ms. Wansley?
A young lady, I don't remember her name.
None of these other bids appear to be in order, so my recommendation is that we re-advertise and open them at next month's meeting for the other sections. Sanders, Sanders one's been approved, but the other ones...
We have another person in the audience that says they're giving you a check.
Bid on the 16th section land, east of the golf course. I handed delivery certified check with everything filled out, name of the hunting club on the outside of it, and the section it was, delivered personally.
Can we check the office and see? Thank you. Well, I would say...
So we need to say until we get a phone call?
Table off, either table them, that's probably the best thing to do until we get some clear...
Make a motion, we table the selection of the remaining bids until we've had time to research the...
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries to table the M1, the remaining M1 items. Aren't y'all glad y'all didn't stay, didn't have to stay for that? Okay, superintendent's report, we're at E1.
It was really busy, and I'm not going to read all these things, but I am going to let you know that there was a couple of items to note. We have been selected for the National Center of Excellence in Education. They're a research organization, and they are doing, they did an interview with us, and they are citing this as part of their research for the data moves that we've seen. So that's pretty neat to be called out by a national organization. Also got to attend the Mississippi Educational Law Conference, and I was very happy that we pay someone to do that work. It was, it was good to hear any of the updates, but there was no, nothing that I think was much different than we saw. Also got to attend a superintendent's alliance retreat, and it was a workshop where we looked at some data and national trends that are coming through education, and I got to meet some incredible leaders and network there. And then I would like to move on to the recognition part, if that's okay. Mr. Perez? We had a, you know, a list of retirees that left us, and we were happy to honor them at a meeting we had towards the end of the year over at AOI. It was well attended, and we appreciate all of those that served our district. We have a special recognition for this particular board meeting. We wanted to, even though we've had an event for them, we wanted to openly state who our district teacher of the year is, and it was Jaslyn Harris from South Park. Our district teacher assistant of the year was Walter Goodwin from WCI. District parent of the year was Trey Smith from Redwood. And the district administrator of the year was Dr. Terrance...
... resolution. Whereas, Amy Nicole Washington Swartz departed this life on May 23rd, 2022, after devoting 13 years of teaching the children of Warren County, impacting the students of Warren Central Intermediate School, Vicksburg Junior High School, Warren Central Junior High School, and River City Early College High School. Whereas, Swartz graduated from Alcorn State University, where she received her master's degree in secondary education with endorsements in English, guidance counseling, psychology, and social studies. And whereas, Swartz touched the lives of hundreds of children with her passion for teaching and authentic caring for each and every student in her classroom and school. And her legacy of commitment and dedication to the community has enriched those fortunate enough to know and work with her. And whereas, Swartz leaves behind her loving husband, Charles Swartz Jr., her beloved children, Charles Swartz III and Destiny Swartz, and other family members, friends, students, and colleagues. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Vicksburg Warren School District hereby honors the life and work of Amy Nicole Washington Swartz, a dedicated teacher, and recognizes the valuable contribution she made to the well-being of her students and the community.
And we'd like to ask the board to approve that with a vote, so that we can give the...
I make a motion that we unanimously accept this resolution, recognizing Ms. Washington Swartz's dedication to our district.
Second, Coach? All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And with that, that concludes my part of the board meeting.
All right, we'll move on to F1, project updates. Jason, are you or Mark online?
Hey, Mr. Slade, this is Jason.
Hey. All yours.
Good evening, board. Thank you, guys, for letting me call in. I have, I have been pulled in a million directions. We've got a lot going on in the district. You've got the update in front of you. We do have a couple of action items at the end that we'll talk about, and I've kind of hit a couple of high notes, just kind of going through the update. We did get the electrical items completed at Vicksburg High School. We'll get with Bill and his guys to make sure we get a back check on that, and obviously make sure the principals and the staff make sure we're good there. So I know that was kind of a lingering item, and I'm glad we got that addressed. You've got a Warren Central update. You've been getting those regularly. It is much more detailed, and in addition to here, I would say that we are getting some of the same struggles that we have with building materials, getting to the site from red iron to anything that's got resin in it, but they are working, they're making progress. I would love to see it a little faster. I know Mark has been over there meeting weekly with contractors, and about every other day, he's over there trying to figure something out in the field. But they're working with Mr. Green, making sure it'll be ready and safe when kids come back in August. I generally stop there. If anybody has any questions on Warren Central, we'll kind of field them now, because I know that kind of, that's a very important project right now.
Yeah, my question would be, I know the red iron's been ordered, but why was it not already ordered before, and why was it not already here? We've had this project going on for how long, and they just now realize we need to order some steel? Really?
So it has been ordered, and maybe ordered was the wrong word. We keep getting, I don't want to call them whatever they may be, inaccurate statements, hearing what we want to hear, being told what we want to hear, rather type thing. It's the fabricator. It has been ordered for quite some time. It just has not been fabricated. So we've got pieces of it that we believe are still another four weeks out, which are going to be critical to getting that metal installed. So that delay is on the contractor, and...
Are we going to get...
He's making it fully aware that that's theirs.
And are they willing to work to make up to meet the deadlines they've already, they've already promised?
They state that they are, and they've had the manpower on site. I know a lot of it's been on inside, that they have been working and showing that effort, especially here, that kids have been out the month of June.
Well, you know, that's, you know, having all that heavy equipment on site to build the rest of that agora, with the children not there right now, it's essential to do as much of that as they can to minimize the impact, and they're wasting good time right now.
They are missing their time. You're 100% right.
And we're the ones going to be inconvenienced by that, not them. So I want to make sure that we're impressing on them that we would appreciate them stepping up the effort to make up for this lost time.
Yes, sir. That, I agree with you, and we're pushing them desperately hard, because I'm tired of, I'm tired of working outside on that project, too. It's time to get a roof on.
It is.
Well, Jason, this is Kimball. Can we, as a board, be given some type of aesthetic contingency plan as to what that could look like?
Yes.
Come the first day of school, to where it can be as the best it can be, instead of like it has been for the last two years?
Yeah, I agree with that. Mark, Russell, myself, and Mr. Green have actually been kind of reviewing that, and the comment, the kind of the general comment is that kids cannot come back as this project was left. But as far as the detailed plan, I think we'll know a lot more where they are when we have our OAC meeting after the Fourth of July, and I think that meeting is actually July 5th, Tuesday, the 5th. And at that meeting, we will have a pretty good plan of what it's going to look like.
Yeah, it would be nice if we, due to the fact that they're behind, it would be nice to remove, I know they've removed a lot, cleaned up a lot in the front of the building, getting the parking lot ready, but all the stuff they laid down on the old band practice field, at some point in time, we need to stop looking like construction zone.
Agreed.
Maybe they need to move that off to the side of the building, get it out of the front of the building. We've looked at it for four, three years now. I think I'm tired of looking at it.
I, I, I will make...
And we expect the grass and facilities to be maintained, unlike it has in the past, or we're going to, we're going to maintain it, and we're going to charge them for it.
That's correct.
I like that. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other Warren Central concerns?
Jason?
Yes, sir, Mr. Sturgis?
Yeah. How you doing, sir?
I am well, thank you.
I know you kind of skimmed over VHS, but it's not on the, the board update, but we were having problems with the roof leak in the auditorium, and I was just curious as to have we rectified the roof leak in the auditorium?
I will be, honestly, it's been about two weeks since I have walked in the auditorium and put my eyes on that.
Yes, sir.
We've been getting updates, and, you know, kind of, we call them deficiency lists. I will have to look. I just, I can't answer that off the cuff. I just, I don't know of anything. I know it was a major issue at one time, because we had ceiling tiles and some damaged seating and what have you. I believe it was rectified, but before I would say 100%, I need to put my eyes on it.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Jason, there, that, there was that leak that was caused by that exterior awning situation. Has that work been done?
Yes, and the rain we've had, I believe most of that water is now in the designated pipe. We have not gotten any reports where we were having that flooding that we worked.
Okay.
So, and what we've had recently has been a pretty good test of it.
Yeah, no doubt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thanks for remembering that. All right, Jason, you want to move on to Academy of Innovation?
Sure. Yes, two weeks ago, we had, at AOI, we had our one-year walkthrough. We identified, obviously, the deficiencies that have popped up within the contractor's one-year period. Got those things on a list, contractors working them all. Obviously, we've got some big picture items that we're still working through with Riggs also on that to get that project closed out. BoMar, the exterior grant project, if you guys have not been by much, it's really cool to see the guys work. They have pressure washed, I'd say, probably a little closer to 60% now of the building. They've repaired a lot of the plaster that was damaged, and they have also repainted, not repainted, it's actually the first coat of paint on the new building, kind of bringing the whole campus together as kind of one uniform color. It's going to be great. It looks really good, it's clean. I'm actually excited as that thing continues to go, so. So far, so good, and Archives in History is happy as well. Bobana site work, we'll talk about that in just a second. And then Beechwood renovations, Riggs may have some comments there, but that one is still kind of hanging in the balance of being able to close out, just a few disputes we're having with the contractor there. As far as updates, that is kind of it, with Warren Central leading the pack, and then obviously the BoMar grant project, trying to knock that out before kids return in August. And if no questions there, we'll talk about the action items.
Go ahead.
So the first action item we have is, A, it's Vicksburg High School. We've talked about this one a little bit, and Mark has gone back, he got some revised pricing. We've met with different subs and vendors, and talked with leadership. Basically, you have three options on that project, and you'll see option one on your sheet, and that's for BCT, and that's from a company called Crack Roswell, that's pulling up the chairs where there's bare concrete, putting in BCT and tying, get back in. Option two is substantially more, $124,000, and that is the same work, except instead of BCT, it'll be putting in luxury vinyl tile and tying everything together. That's a very expensive option. Now, when you see option three, I've got epoxy paint over there in the side. That's a little bit of a hybrid, and we'll walk through it and answer any questions you have. So with option three, it is a, that quote is from a company in Vicksburg called Custom Flooring. The scope of work, they'd be removing all the chairs, they would be putting in BCT where the chairs are, like the other contractors, but what they proposed, and actually like it as an idea, the risers, which is the area where the concrete kind of turns up and goes to the next step, if you will, keeping those epoxy painted, obviously giving some BCT to adhere to that, would be a little more cumbersome, and then, you know, a maintenance and upkeep issue for Bill. So the option there is to paint those with epoxy in the riser areas. But that, for all of that, BCT for the chairs... So the option there is to paint those with epoxy in the riser areas. But that price, for all of that, VCT where the chairs are, painting the risers with epoxy was $40,692.25.
Maybe I'm confused, but I don't understand why it's so much different. You're still putting VCT on the, you're not putting it as much? And you're just putting, like, the walkways is painted, or why is it such a difference?
That's what we've been trying to find out.
Yeah, and I'm going to be completely honest. Craft Roswell, they're a very large contractor. They're the one that, they did the work with RASH under the construction bid project that we had. I will say it loosely, sometimes you get contractors that give you a "I really don't want to fool with it" price. We have asked the contractor to go back a couple times. I know Mark has had numerous conversations of walking sites two or three times. I've met with them. That's their price. Mark has actually talked in depth with the people at Custom, actually to the point today, talking with Ms. Donna. They're comparing their scope, and he has numerous times asked her, "Are you sure? Have you missed anything?" "No, I've got it."
So this is VTC everywhere. Take the chairs up, wall-to-wall VTC.
With the exception of the risers between the steps.
And they'll be painting with epoxy, but nobody walks on them. You pay your foot kick, your toe kick here.
Yeah, you should have that full proposal, and they've got that description, remove, reset chairs, paint risers, sand and prep the floor for VCT, and on and on. They've got some date things in there, because they quoted this in May. Obviously, they won't be able to meet, you know, start work May 26th, but anyway, we can, you know, review that as we go.
Jason.
Yes, sir.
How confident are you in the disparity of the price, but yet the quality of the work? In other words-
The materials are the same. We have asked everybody to bid the same flooring products, and it doesn't matter who would be putting in the material. The material is the same. It's like buying a Chevy, and it doesn't matter what digger you go buy it from. This contractor's a local guy. You guys have used this company within the district on other things. They don't like working for large general contractors, and I've seen pictures of some of their stuff. I've just never personally worked with custom flooring. So I would tell you, I don't know. Now, Bill may be able to answer that if he is there. I'm not sure if he is.
Thank you. Well, you've answered half of my question. I preached, well, more than half, three-fourths of it. We've used them before, and the material is the same, except the price is different, which is great.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And it's my understanding, correct if I'm wrong, Cassandra, if you're not here, but this is not part of the bond money, right?
That is correct. This is something that we were, guys, for your pricing.
So part of this would be y'all deciding whether y'all want to do this out of a 16-section interest purchase or a fund balance. You've got money in both.
Okay.
So with the information, does this board have enough information now to make a decision? If so, what's the pleasure of the board?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Jason, did you get bids on, like, you asked for bids on all three options in custom, Craft Roswell gave you just the VCT and LBT bids, and the Southern gave you just the modified bid, is that right?
That's correct. That's exactly right.
Just making sure, because at least the first two are going to be in the bid category range, it appears, and the other one's going to be just two quotes.
Correct.
So I want to make sure we've got that covered. Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Attorney, you are in agreeance with the bid process as far as it's legal? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like, before we make the decision, it deals with that.
That's entirely, that's probably a good idea.
Bill, are you on? I know he's been out because he had some-
I don't think he's on.
Well, you know-
Contingent of bond?
Yeah. You know, Bill, from the beginning, you know, this has been an issue since the day I saw it. And the floors' surface area is inadequate in the way it was resurfaced with the bid and bond money. We found a couple of different solutions, which didn't make us much happier, to be honest with you. So inside that, the only thing Bill has said repeatedly is he don't want floor surfaces that you're walking on to be painted, because you're talking about a maintenance nightmare. To paint underneath those chairs, it would have to be done every single year. And you go paint on top of all the chairs. So any solution that we have, he wanted from the beginning either to leave that area alone or to put VCT there, so.
Well, I think if we approve this, we ought to approve it with a contingency, seeing as Bill's not here. With the review of bill, our maintenance department has verified that it meets their standards and are good with it, just because we're not the expert.
How good is this bid through? What is the date?
Bid three.
Let me say.
I would generally, at 60 days unless they notice something on there, so I would say you got to-
I mean, I think Bill ought to be able to review this.
Maybe enjoy it.
So if I may, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we accept option three with the contingency that we talked with Bill to give us some type of report on custom flooring and the business that they've done with the school, and if it is satisfactory, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve option three for $40,000. Sir?
And to be paid from-
Oh, oh, and to be paid from 16 section.
16 section.
We have a motion on the floor.
Can I ask a question? The satisfaction you want from Bill is to provide that to the superintendent, so we don't have to wait for another board meeting, correct?
Correct, sir. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Coach? All right, I have all eyes, and the motion carries. All right, Jason, you move on to Bovana?
All right, this one's a little interesting, and it's a bid, and generally, we have a recommendation to award for a bid, but I felt it'd be prudent for us to talk about it, and I will kind of base my recommendation on you guys. So obviously, we've had some drainage issues on that site, some paving issues, and kind of a litany of other things there. So the base bid for that work, for correcting the drainage around the building, redoing the asphalt work, doing a lot of underground piping, just getting water away from the building in general. We received bids on that for $214,150 by Southern Pacing. They were about 3% higher than the budget we had, so we're okay there. It felt comfortable with that. So there were two things, though, that we were at the price as alternates, just because we knew we were getting close to the end of bond issue money. Alternate number one was $7,000. So if you would imagine, if you were standing at that building with your back to I-20, looking at the front door, you've got a sidewalk that is running east to west. We do have to cross that sidewalk a couple of times with pipes. Obviously, we were going to cut out that section and put in pipe, and then pour that little piece back. But we took the alternate, asking the alternate for $7,000, we would repair out and replace that sidewalk in its entirety, okay? That's alternate number one. Alternate number two, however, is, we'll just talk about it. So the entry drive, which you do not have in the base bid, is where you turn, like you are coming into the school. We call it the pothole road, whatever you want to call it, right? You have sinkholes there. That work, all the way up to about where the portable building is, which is the property line, so from the entry all the way up to about where that building is, if you could vision, it's not within the base bid. We did ask them to price redoing all of that asphalt, correcting the potholes and redoing the asphalt. That price was almost $79,000. We spent a lot of time with Bill, and actually Briggs was involved with it. Here's the issue. So if you spend $80,000 on that, the reason that road is in the condition that it is in is due to the condition of Culkin Water District's main water supply that runs under that road. As it deteriorates in a section, they'll dig it out and replace that section. We talked with them, talked with the county. They stated they didn't have funds to redo that water line in its entirety. So spending that $79,000 to redo that, Bill's incredibly concerned that it's only a matter of time before it blows out, and then the county's in there putting a patch on your brand-new road again. So that being said, that's kind of the presentation of Bovana, and we're just making sure we had accurate numbers for you guys to make a decision on.
So we never fix it because they might have, I mean, you see what I'm saying? I agree with not fixing it and wasting your money, but what do you, I mean, we're-
Well, I'm curious, is, do we own the road?
Not that portion, no, sir.
Okay.
So why is the county not fixing it?
Yeah.
As I said, they don't have the money.
So they want us to foot the bill? And then-
Correct.
And they want to blame us for raising taxes. So just make sure we got all that right.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Well, and to think about this, if we stop at our property line, we're going to be driving off beautiful asphalt onto junk.
Right.
So let me ask a question. How much does it cost, how much would it cost us to replace the water line? I'm just asking another question.
I didn't even have that in the mix of things. I mean, it-
I'm glad you didn't.
It would be steep, because that is a, I want to say that's an eight-inch main, and you're talking about shutting off water to communities for a period of time. It's not an easy project, but if Bill was in there, he'd stand up and jump and tell you how bad it is.
Could we do something like, I mean, to make it a little nicer, slag, spray it with tar, something other than just having the pothole central again? I mean, you're darned if you do, you're darned if you don't. I mean, I agreed. I don't want to waste $80,000. They're going to dig it up tomorrow, but I mean, also don't want to build a brand-new parking lot up there. You know, we'll have a school on the hill that you got to go through.
That's what I'm saying, that you're going to go through-
Gravel road to get to that's got potholes you'll lose a car in.
I concur, sir, but, but I do have a problem. When we've asked them to do things, it's always, that's yours. You repair it. So why are we going to repair their, I won't use the word garbage, but their street? And then, like Bill assumes, that maybe two months from now, a pipe bursts, and we have repaired something that now they got to come in and-
Maybe we need to put a sign-
And then it's over, it's going to be back with potholes.
Maybe we need to put a sign up that says- That the school district's maintenance starts here. Please dial this number to complain from here to here. Please dial this number to complain.
Unfortunately, we can't, whatever we put down there is theirs. It's not ours.
And let me interject something here, and Briggs, maybe you can tell me legally. My understanding is that water line is not even the county's. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Not the county's?
Okay. So we're talking, it's really three entities. It's Vicberg Warren School, the Warren County Board of Supervisors, and the road, quote-unquote, and then Culkin's water line. Did I say that right, Briggs?
Gotcha.
But the location of that water line is probably lying within the county right of way, so it's-
It is. It is, according to the survey.
What do you do?
So if we spend everything but the 40, excuse me, but the 80-
85.
We're going to be driving off of our pretty parking lot onto a cruddy road?
Yep.
Yeah, it's coming the other way. You're going to be bouncing off of theirs, coming onto your nice one.
Right.
I would like to speak, though, to kind of the urgency that the paving and the drainage project at Bovana is needed, and Mr. Shealy, you kind of echo that a little bit. I mean, y'all know, I bet you got one coming in right now.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the 214-150, but I'm not going to approve the 78.
I think alternate number one is an incredibly good price. It's the district's money. I think that is, Bill couldn't do that sidewalk for that.
So the, so option-
So alternate one and the low bid, I make a motion to approve those two.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the original 214-150 and alternate one at the cost of $7,000 to do the front sidewalk.
A question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
The 124 is what, is alternate one?
No.
That is good, that one. You're still upon the-
Yeah.
I'd be able to beat.
I'd have to beat.
To beat, Jimbo.
Okay.
Bovana project, so beat.
So the motion was to- That's to pay the-
Parking lot.
Parking lot.
That's the 214, and then the seven is the sidewalk.
Is to fix the sidewalks.
We're not approving to pay the road that's going to get beat up and-
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All in favor to approve B, I guess that's BI-1 and BI. I suppose that's what that looks like.
Looks like an I.
The alternate one.
Alternate one.
Motion in a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Can I, do we have any other alternative to approach the county again and have a conversation with the bridge?
Reggie's been in that quiet, Meyer, and can you, is that something that needs going to executive session to talk about, or?
I don't know about just approaching the county is not an executive session issue, but it may be.
I mean, I'd be glad to go talk to Kelly and or someone at the board and ask.
So, you know, talk to them about the need to fix the property while we're spending all this money on the parking lot and entrance into the school. I haven't been out in a long time. It sounds like it's a horrible show.
I remember, right? It was worse than, I live on three miles of gravel roads, and it was worse than it is.
If we approached them, it would say, if y'all get the base ready, we don't mind paying the 78,000 and getting it repaid.
But just don't throw new lines in the hole.
But also, if we could have agreement that if you do cut it to fix it, we want it put back the way it was. If we're paying for it, I mean-
They're not going to take that.
Yeah, they're not going to, if they don't do it now, they won't-
Because that's Culkin Water. They'd be putting it back the way it was, and they're certainly not.
Right, they just said they didn't have any money.
Yeah, I'm table. All right, B-1, you mean?
M-1.
Oh, untable. Okay, I will make a motion. We untable M-1. Are we through with the-
So we done with Jason?
Yes.
Okay.
Jason, thank you very much.
Make a motion. We untable-
Y'all have a happy fourth.
Thank you.
I'll be happy, too.
All right, motions on the table to untable M-1, which is the 16-section bid openings. Can I get a second?
A second motion.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Back to me.
Yep, back to you.
Apparently, we've got some more information, and I'm going to say this before I open these, that I'm probably going to recommend to you that we take these under advisement, because I don't know, there are people here that obviously know what happened to them. Some of these other people that are not here may have the same thing happen to them, but if we can find out from our 16-section manager that there was no other information on these other three forechecks that we got, then I would say go with, if these are all proper, go with these. But if not, I would recommend that you take them under advisement, so we can ensure that the other people that are not here didn't have the same thing happen to them that some of these folks had happened. But with that said-
But in doing that, we wouldn't receive any more bids?
No, no, unless we just decide there's too much confusion, and we just readvertise all of them, and then these folks, unfortunately, we just have to resubmit it.
No, but what I'm saying is, the bids we received, to make sure that we have all the proper information, which ones are going to, versus accepting any new ones. We wouldn't be accepting any new ones for these. We would only be clarifying the information you currently have.
Possibly, but if we're not sure, if somebody says that we didn't, you know, if we have somebody that reports that, yeah, I submitted the information just like a couple of these guys did, and we find out that somehow it got misplaced.
Then we need to do it all.
Then I just, it's a lot easier to readvertise, and I'd hate it for these guys, they may have to submit another bid, and again, there are other people, too, in this process, but it's better to do that.
Just to make a fair.
Then you authorize one of these to get the bid, and then somebody else comes along and says, I submitted my stuff, too, and then we find out they did, and then we've got to try to reverse all that.
But do we need to reveal their bid, then? If we're going to, if that is a possibility, do we need to let the public know what these guys bid on this property?
If you don't want me to, we could just stop right now and move that we readvertise for next month. It could be better, it could be better for these guys, because they're not going to, everybody's going to probably know at least what the bids were when they start. Now, I'm not saying that you couldn't find out that these other people just, you know, submitted theirs, and somehow it got messed up. They just didn't do what they were supposed to do, is submit a bid sheet.
Do we have to do all these at the same time? Why can't we accept the same- Why can't we accept the Sanders' bid, accept these bids that are in order?
We've accepted Sanders' already, that's been done.
I'm just saying, can we, if you do not have another one for one that's in order...
But he's got checks that he didn't know what they're from.
My problem is, I got a couple of checks, just like, like, maybe one of them said, I got a check over here, I think I have a bid sheet that says what they were bidding on it, and I don't know what section it is.
Would that default not be a rejection of that because it bids out of order?
Yeah, I mean, it just means they didn't, they're...
If, if that is in fact true, yes, it would be.
But didn't you open the envelopes and they weren't in with the envelopes?
Well, the, these three that we just got, that we could open, were not with the initial stuff.
Okay.
They just found these back in the office.
Uh.
And my concern is there may be something else back in the office, our sixteen section manager's not here, if we wake up tomorrow morning and she comes in and says, oh yeah, somebody else submitted, and I'm sorry, I stuck it in the drawer, uh, which I hope didn't happen, then we got the same problem that we're already dealing with.
And I've asked her, those are the three that she had, in fact, in May, and then we just, you know, the ones that we gathered, uh, you have those, so, that we see.
So, you're assuming there are no other ones?
I, I am, um, you know, can't say a hundred percent, but again, I just, I asked her, I text her, and she said that that was, those are the three that she collected, um, and had in the, uh, in the back of the office, so, uh, that's all she collected.
Ms. Lewis, Ms. Lewis, would anybody else accept bids in your office?
Uh, maybe for this week, or...
I mean, would anybody else accept the bids, like, if I come in and just...
Well, all bids that I know that came to me, but yeah, the front, the front office, um, would receive those, those came to...
Right, right, which could be pertinent, pertinent to what our attorney is saying is that it could be somewhere else stuck in my office and...
Sure, I may not be a hundred percent.
Right, right.
I'll be a hundred percent.
So, what's the pleasure of the board?
I have none.
I would, let's do this, um, I'm gonna ask that you just take this back, um, table it, um, and then, you know, worst-case scenario, either we get back, if I can find out, and we have something more concrete that we know there's nothing else, we could open it at the end of the meeting, or we could just re-advertise. There's not gonna be an auction, there's not an auction process in this, guys, um, that we're doing on these unless the board instructs me otherwise, and I don't think they have, we didn't do it on, well, Sanders only had one, you gotta have three to have an auction anyway, uh, and I don't think we've got three for, for any of these tracks, um, to have an auction, but we don't traditionally do that on hunting, fishing, leases anyway.
So, what's gonna change between now and end of the meeting, is I guess my question?
No, but nothing between now and end of the meeting, but it's like the president said, we put these bids out here, we get somebody that tomorrow says, well, it seems awfully odd to me that we got four checks over here, we've never had this happen, I've been doing this for fourteen years, and I've never had four checks come in with nothing else attached to them.
And they're weird dollar amounts, right? They're not even dollar amounts that match.
I don't know what sections they are, I mean, almost always, we have a bid sheet and a check with them.
So, our, our position then is that those checks that did not comply with the procedure is not a valid bid anyway, but we don't know that there's not anymore in the front office, is that what we're saying?
Since we had three that just showed up, right.
It seems awfully odd, if we had one of these, I'd say the person just messed up their bid, and, and maybe, maybe all of them did, maybe they just all messed up on the bids, it just does seem awfully odd to me, we have that many. But I'm fine, if y'all want to go forward and open these, uh, I can't sit here and say definitively that you don't want somebody that comes in and says, I submitted it, and, and, uh, you know, if they want to challenge us, we just have to fight that challenge later on.
I would rather do that in fairness to the people that are here.
Open?
Yes. And if we end up getting a black eye somewhere else, I mean, we already got one, this is the worst thing we've run into, so...
Is that what the board, board would like the way it's open?
We've already got the black eye.
Yeah, this is embarrassing.
Board, ready to proceed?
Do we need to make an action on it, or just tell you to go?
Well, y'all, y'all remove it from the table.
Yep, we did.
I guess unless you vote up otherwise, I'm gonna go ahead and proceed.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, we've got one bid from section sixteen, sixteen-five, from WR Hunting, it appears, from that envelope. Somebody here from WR Hunting? Okay, same, same property that you leased previously, I took it.
Any of it?
Uh, we got a bid, the minimum bid is twenty-five hundred, this bid is twenty-five hundred, there are certified funds in the amount of two thou, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, ten percent of the bid amount, that bid appears to be in order. Let me see if there are any other bids that... There do not appear to be any of the bids, this bid appears to be in order, so if you'd like to move to, uh, approve the bid for WR Hunting Club, R. Kent Campbell.
All right, then, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make, I, I make a motion assuming there's no one else here that bid for that, that we accept the bid for WR Hunting, uh, for, in the, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for section sixteen, sixteen-five, uh...
That's track one or two?
True, that's track two.
Track two, okay. All right, there's a motion, can I get a second?
A second, the motion.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, Sturgis.
Motion. What do you think, sir?
Okay, I said no.
You said no? Uh, okay, I'm gonna vote aye, so that will carry.
Sorry, you said yes?
Yes.
Okay, next bid is also the other track, sixteen, sixteen-five. Uh, this bid is in the amount of five hundred dollars, it's from Mark J. Chaney. There are certified funds, in the amount of fifty dollars representing ten percent of the bid amount, this bid does appear to be in order. I don't see any other bids here for...
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we accept the bid for five hundred dollars for, uh, six, section sixteen, sixteen-five, track, was this three? For Mark J. Chaney.
Second the motion.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No, Sturgis.
And I'm gonna vote yes on that one also. So, the motion carries, and we're moving on now to sixteen, eight-four.
Okay, sixteen, eight-four. Here's, we have one bid without two, minimum bid is ten thousand five hundred dollars. We have a bid from Andrew Freeman, in the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars, there are certified funds representing, uh, ten percent of the bid, one thousand fifty dollars, that bid appears to be in order. I don't have any others that...
This is for twenty-one seventeen north?
No.
Or Go Hill.
Oh, Go Hill, okay.
Sixteen, eighteen-four.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
We only received one, one bid?
One bid.
Make a motion that we accept the bid for sixteen, eighteen-four, um, Andrew, Andrew Freeman for ten thousand five hundred dollars.
A second, the motion.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, Sturgis.
And I'll vote yes also on that one. And we are down to twenty-one seventeen-four.
The only bid that I've got that appears to be on that one is not in proper order, there is certified funds, as I mentioned earlier, in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars, which typically represents ten percent, but, uh, there's no bid sheet with it, so there's no way for me to determine what their bid is, so this bid, if it is a bid, is not in order.
Do we need to make action to reject it?
Yes, and all...
Re-advert, so we reject it, we re-advertise it?
Re-advertising that term.
Make a motion that we, that we reject the one bid, uh, that properly submitted for twenty-one seventeen north, four east, is that correct?
And re-advertise.
And re-advertise.
Second, Coach, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank y'all, and we apologize for the staff food.
So, y'all mail out the rest of the stuff and ask it to override and stuff? We've always had to get it done around every round, you know, or...
You'll mail it to the same...
You'll have to pay the full amount within ten days, pay the balance, are you the, one of the bidder winners? Yeah, you'll have to pay it within ten days and come in and sign the lease.
After we get it in, I don't know, next week.
Okay, I don't know how Mr. Wonsley does that, I thought she, you'd probably come up here to the office and do that, do you know, or does she...
Have ten working days?
Yes, I think so, but I'll, I'll...
We'll get it, we'll get back in that time.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Unless y'all want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we'll give you a breath to egg.
Y'all are welcome to stay.
We'll continue.
It's the best show in town.
All right, so now we're gonna move on to our financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The financial report for our June meeting, the statement of cash flow, the ending fund balance, you will see on your statement of revenue and expense in your packet, uh, does reconcile to the ending cash flow balance as of May, um, the estimated fund balance currently, twenty-nine million, nine-hundred-sixty-eight thousand, four-hundred-seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Our M A E P collections, uh, preparations for April, uh, was two million, three-hundred-eighty-eight thousand, five-hundred-seventy-three, which has been consistent for FY twenty-two, May, I'm sorry, I said April, but it's May. Uh, we ended up receiving twenty-five, for the year, twenty-five million, nine-hundred-eighty-six thousand, two-hundred-thirty-seven dollars for the year. In terms of our casino revenue, uh, we received the revenue on time, uh, our April revenue received in May totaled sixty-seven thousand, five-hundred-fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, we have received our, uh, May revenue as well, and it came up at sixty-seven thousand as well. Uh, that concludes my financial statement for June.
Make a motion that we accept the financial, eight officer.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the financial report, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And we've now got a G-two.
Okay, uh, G-two, our bid results, uh, for the FY twenty-two, twenty-three year, or twenty-three-year fiscal year, uh, we want to start in order, the mats and uniforms, uh, it is the request for board approval for the bid results for them, UniFirst came in more, uh, in every category except for the loss charges, uh, which is minimal for the district, um, so, if you look at your bid sheet, you will see, uh, the three vendors that did bid on that item, and UniFirst, uh, won that bid.
Want to do these one at a time, or...
That's fine, sure.
Can I get a, get board action on the first, the mats and the uniforms, RFP number twenty-two dash twenty-three dash oh-two?
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, bid, make sure I get the new lookup right.
UniFirst.
It's not in my, in my paperwork that way, hold on.
No, I have...
My paperwork didn't say...
You should have.
I'm going up electronically, so if there's none in here electronically, you, you're out of luck. I don't see it, okay.
See if it's that page right.
Here it is, right here.
Go one more out.
All right, UniFirst, okay, make a motion that we accept RFP twenty-two, twenty-three oh-two, uh, for UniFirst, and the amount of the bid was, is it having an amount, or is it...
Mats and uniforms, right?
Yes.
Doesn't have an amount.
Yeah, we're working down, yeah.
Okay. Make a motion that we accept the RFP for, for mats and uniforms for UniFirst, RFP twenty-two, twenty-three oh-two.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Question, Mr., question, Mr. President?
Yes.
How, how long does the, on the bids that, that we're accepting tonight, how long does the term go? Is it a year term?
Uh, for the, yeah, for the mats and uniforms.
For all of them?
Uh, no, there's one that's three years.
Which is?
Uh, printing services.
Printing service, okay, thank you.
Okay, I have, all in favor again, please?
Oh, oh, I'm done.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, motion carries. All right, move janitorial services.
Okay, um, I'm requesting that the board approve the bid results for janitorial services, GCA Services Group was the only bidder, uh, the fuel, I guess the fuel and labor costs extreme high, so, um, other bidders did not anticipate, so, that's the only bid we have. And their costs, you can see their matrix, uh...
How'd they compare to last year?
Pardon me?
How did they compare to last year?
Yeah, that's interesting.
For the costs, it's the same, I mean, this is the same group, my understanding, but, uh, they've gone up, um...
Like everybody else?
Yeah.
How much did they go up, what was the percent?
Well, we're looking at probably about, uh, nine thousand dollars.
So, about ten percent?
Yes, yes.
All right, what's the, uh, pleasure of the board on janitorial services, RFP twenty-two dash twenty-three dash oh-three?
Selmo.
Second.
Motion in the second to accept that bid, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now to print services.
Okay, do have representative for print services here, uh, for Toshiba, uh, they won the bid, again, um, they came in lowest bid, uh, and the only other bidder you see on your sheet here.
And how does this compare to last, to the previous contract?
Previous came up at, I think we're about two thousand or so more than the previous contract with Toshiba, so, it's gone up as well.
Make a motion, we accept the RFP for printing services, twenty-two, twenty-three oh-four, to, for Toshiba.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, delivery propane services.
Okay.
Pest control.
Pest control, I think is the next one. Okay, uh, request board approval for RFP twenty-two dash twenty-three oh-five, uh, for, uh, pest control, Terminex, Terminex was the only bidder, again, uh, the, the, you know, all the area, I guess the fuel and labor cost, again, is, is affecting, um, the bidders in the service area.
What did this one compare to previous year?
Uh, I don't know, I can get that information.
So, we didn't have Terminex since, in previous years? So we didn't have Terminex in previous years? This is a new contract?
No, not last year, this is a new contract.
This is a new contract?
Yes.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on pest control, RFP 222305?
I make a motion that we accept Terminex as the bid.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Right now, we're going to delivery propane, delivered propane services, RFP 222306.
Okay, and I'll have to pull that one before, you know, we put them all out for bid, but this one, we did not receive anything, any bids on, so we will go back out for that.
Okay. So no action taken?
No action taken.
Do we need to take action to rebid it, or?
She can do it, yeah.
Okay.
You're allowed to authorize that.
Okay. Do I need to state that as well? Okay, all right.
All right, move to the next.
The next item is our reading curriculum and teacher training. As you see on your sheet, Reading Horizon won that bid. They met all of the criteria that was specified and was submitted for Board of, for K through 12. And the total, total cost.
And this is, compares to how we did for last year?
No, this is the first time we've had a comprehensive reading.
Okay.
Curriculum.
There were two vendors, but Reading Horizon met the criteria that was specified in the bid complete, so they won the bid.
Okay, what's the board action on reading curriculum, RFP 222307?
I make a motion that we approve the RFP, whatever those numbers were, I can't see them. What'd you say it was?
222307.
222307.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And where are we on now?
Garbage pickup.
Oh, I don't have one of those.
Same thing with the garbage pickup. You don't have that one because.
Nobody bids.
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have to rebid that one, put that one back out.
I know a couple of people in Jackson.
They did not.
There's some trucks, I hear there's some trucks.
I apologize.
There's some trucks at the airport, we can talk to them about.
All right, last item, Chromebooks and related accessories.
All right. Again, same with supply. We had one bidder that did meet the criteria for the quantity that we needed, the tablets and the mouse, as you see on your bid matrix sheet, and it has been suggested that we go back out to get the other accessories or the case, because we probably can get it at a lower price, so we will want to do that piece as well.
So your recommendation is?
Is not to accept this bid?
No.
The entire bid, yeah.
You're wanting to accept it for the Chromebooks?
Right.
And the warranty?
That's right.
And the management software, but not the accessories?
That's correct.
So we will remove line item three from this, from this award, right?
That's correct, line item three. There are also other accessories as well, they're not on here, and that's only because they're not in stock, so being that we have the 210 in quantity, it's hard to find those items that, you know, that are stopped, so we'll have to go out to do that as well.
So we're really only accepting Chromebook?
The tablet and the.
Warranty.
The warranty.
Okay, which is?
So not the mouse?
And the mouse, and the mouse and the wheel, yeah.
What about the delivery, delivery time? So it's line item one, two, and four? Is that what we're doing?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, so if I can get them.
Was there a bid on, I don't have that front of me, was there a bid on three? So you're gonna reject the bid on three?
We will reject the bid on three for the case.
All right, so make, when you make that motion, just move to reject the bid and then authorize for read, because you did get your bids and re-advertise for that.
All right, I make a motion that we accept the bid, or award the bid to CDI for line items one, two, and three, and.
Two and four.
Excuse me, one, two, and four, and we reject three.
Yes.
Second.
And authorize re-advertise.
And authorize re-advertise.
Authorize re-advertise, thank you.
Coach, got a second? Second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Frank, I just want to apologize, that was not.
I think I found some of it, but.
It was light of the mission.
I think I found some of it, but it was hard, it was hard to read. I found it.
All of this was hard to read, too, this print.
All right, G3, property insurance.
Can I make a point real quick?
Yes.
In the future, this is not a criticism, it would help us if y'all would, if we're doing multiple things like we did on these, y'all just spell out what you're recommending us to do in your recommendation. I think you said which one to accept, but since we're rejecting some and approving some, if you have a recommendation and why, that would definitely help in the documentation.
Sure.
But I'm not criticizing that. It would help us probably move quicker next time.
Sure. Okay, I think I have it for you, the property insurance and the insurance document for FY '23 that will need the approval of the board.
And I'll bring this up, we talked about this, I'm gonna bring it up anyway. There was some, some language that had to do with some casino, Riverview Casino and its parent company, or Waterview, excuse me, Casino and its parent company being listed as additionally insured in here. We feel like that was due to the fact that their facility was used for some school items, correct me if I'm wrong, Christian, for some, their facility was used and we had to add them as additionally insured on our policy, and Ms. Lewis has been gracious enough to tell me she's got to make sure that if we're paying extra for them to be additionally insured on our policy, they get removed, because we're not using that facility anymore. It may be just a drag over from later time or earlier time, but I did notice it when I was reading this monster of a document today, and it was very weird that Waterview Casino was shown up on our insurance policy, so, but I've asked her for clarity, and she assured me that's gonna be done.
Yeah, that's got to be an old one.
Yep. And it happens, and I mean, it happens all the time, so just make sure that we're not paying a rider for somebody that we're not dealing with anymore.
So I assume that someone did a, did an audit or validation for all the assets, like the trucks, we've added several new trucks, that trucks came off, were taken off, school buses that were, that we, asset disposed of, we're sure that this is, like you said, we're not paying for insurance on something we don't have anymore?
That's true, yes. They were sent to the departments, and they verified or confirmed those things that were old, were taken off, and those that were new, added.
Okay.
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the board on the property and insurance renewal that expires quickly, so make action on it.
Today.
Make a motion that we approve the property insurance renewal proposal for FY '23.
You got a motion in the second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you.
All right, we're now gonna move to this lengthy consent agenda here.
Get your money warmed up.
Yep.
Unless y'all don't ask any questions. I wasn't looking at you, Jim, I mean, that was just, that was in general.
I felt the dagger.
Hold on, I gotta get my pen out.
We're gonna now move on to the consent.
Wait a minute, Jim, I gotta get my pen warmed up.
So I would like to, are there any items to be pulled?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
You ready, Mr. President?
I'm good, I'm ready, I'm ready. Go for it.
12, that would be, that would be H12.
Okay.
15.
H15.
Yes, sir. 17, 19, 24, 51, 52, wait a minute, somebody has, yeah, I wrote, not, no, not 52, 51.
Okay.
It was already circled, I got three different updates. J2, J4, and I'm done, done.
And I want to pull 31.
H31?
H31.
H31?
31.
Is there any other items to be pulled?
She wasn't on there. I will. You think she's on there? She wasn't on my sheet.
Was she on, yeah?
Huh? Oh, she is? Okay, because she told me she wasn't gonna be, but okay. Oh, that's creepy.
So you gotta get out.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so J1, J2 also pulled.
Which one is that?
J1.
J1. Have you seen, hold on. Okay.
All right, to repeat, or to state the motion.
I will state the, you may do it?
Go for it.
All right, we, I motion we to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of H12, 16, 17.
15, 15.
H15.
15.
15, 17.
What about the rest?
15.
All in units.
I'm not right.
19.
What about 16?
No, he kept 16.
Okay. 17, 19, 24, 31.
Yep.
51.
51.
And 51.
51.
J1, 2, 4.
Then J1, 2, and 4.
Somebody quickly say that.
H31, huh?
Right?
H31, huh?
Yeah.
H31.
She wanted 31.
Yep.
And, and 1, 2, and 4 under J, right?
1, 2, and 4 under J.
Yeah, 1, 2, and 4.
You have a second, you have a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Sturgis, say it, Will.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of clarification, and I'm not against anyone getting extra money. Let me just make that note upfront. I'm not against anyone getting extra money. But I do have a question. If I read this correctly, we have already approved everyone except the additions that were enfold on this sheet, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, are we, the money remains constant? Is it, has the money gone up? Was the 115, did we approve that at the last board meeting, or has the money gone up with the extra people that have been included?
The money actually went down, because we had some people that decided not to participate with some schools, and so we had to replace some of them.
Yes, ma'am.
So the money actually went down.
Money went down?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure, and has it already started?
Yes, it started June 6.
It, oh, it started, okay. But the money went down, that's more important than when it started, that's just, okay. I'd like to make a motion that would, thank you, I'd like to make a motion that we approve H12, please.
Got a motion in three seconds. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Sturgis, H15, that didn't carry, by the way.
Yes, sir. And I'm working out of a box, and I apologize.
Okay. This is for the bus purchases. I see, I know the CE300 have been, it's been erased, I get that, and it's 13 buses. Of the 13 buses, does it include special need buses?
Is Ms. Taylor on the line?
Ms. Taylor?
Good evening. No, sir, it does not include special ed buses, handicap buses, no, sir.
Okay. Are these electric buses?
No, sir, they're regular diesel buses.
Okay. And how much is the cost for each bus?
If you give me a few seconds, I can let you know there, whatever it is on state contract.
Okay. And is it, will there be air conditioning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you're also purchasing upgrade, are you also purchasing other upgrades for other buses? It mentions AC on here, but are you, is this just for the buses you're buying? Are you buying some upgrade kits for older buses?
No, sir, that's just for the buses we're purchasing, we're not upgrading.
Okay.
And what's the capacity of the buses?
71 passengers.
71.
Yes, sir.
And these funds have been set aside for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, once you give me the total amount. Well, I meant, I meant the cost and then the total amount, please.
Yes, sir.
Are we waiting on the total? Is that what we're waiting on?
Yes, sir, the, the amount.
We're still gonna have to approve this once, right, or not?
Sir?
This is seeking permission to go out to bid for purchase.
Right.
So are, we're still gonna come back and, she's gonna tell us what the price is at the next meeting, and we're gonna have to prove it, do you want to wait on this?
Bid and out, permission to bid.
Just, just bidding out?
We're not buying them right now.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. That's perfect then. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Ms. Taylor to go seek permission for bids for 13 buses.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Sturgis, H17.
17.
About to hire you an assistant.
I know, right? Thank you. MDE, I'm sure Brian knows 10 times more than I do on this, I just, I did have a question on it though, and it's probably simple that Brian probably should have asked you, but is there a cost to this data sharing? No cost?
No.
So.
This is laying the foundation for something we've been needing for a long time, and that's a state-operated operation system, so once this IMSIS data shares, then that'll be forthcoming. And I've heard a little word that we might have somebody being able to put some pressure there, so.
So we've shared before?
We currently share the same set of data with MDE already, it's just, this gives us a suspension of permission to share this data with a new contractor of MDE, so that they can create a new updated system that performs better for us. We're awesome.
So will it help us as far as data being breached?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, we accept H17, please.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. H19, Mr. Sturgis.
H19.
Okay. In our package here of the 56 items that we have.
Which I'm pretty excited about the percentage of pulls, if you, if you, you know, distributed based on the in-count there.
Don't, no, don't get it, you might post more.
Thank you. I've noticed that we have had several schools to use their. I've noticed that we have had several schools to, um, use their money from the federal government for reading and math. And this one says, this is a computer-based program, monitoring program for reading and math from K through twelve. I'm gonna do what I shouldn't do, is assume that the, it's for all schools, K, or with the schools that are K through twelve. And, and I'm, I'm asking two questions into one. They, they actually using their own money to, uh, purchase the same thing, it appears. Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, uh, Mr. Sturgis, to your question. Um, this particular program goes along with what we call our multi-tiered system of supports. It's required by MDE. What it does is you can think of it as a, as a triangle in which eighty-five percent of our children will fall in tier one. And that's what we call general instruction. Okay? You have another percentage, about roughly ten percent is what we call tier two. And then we have about five percent in tier three. The problem here sometimes in education is that our triangle gets inverted. And our top becomes heavy. That tier two and tier three feeds into exceptional education, child finding special aid. Uh, in terms of being equitable, this program will allow us to function at the district level, looking at and targeting those children. And our ultimate goal is to keep them, if at all possible, from ending up into that special ed education track by intervening. And in this case, interventions, uh, imply that these things are done in addition to what's done in that classroom.
And they can't be provided by the same, uh, sample data. So move out of, it, it shifts to instructional level and it has to be a different, uh, solution. So there's no redundancy if that was-
Yeah, yeah, exactly right, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, no redundancy. And this would allow us, the difference, the major difference in what we do in the regular schools, we're testing standards. This program will allow us to test a skill. A skill may be decoding, uh, a skill may be knowing seven times six, but the standard may be utilizing those properties. And see, that's where children fall within those gaps. So this program will allow us to test those children, to track these. And this will be able to follow them K all the way up to high school. And it's our hope that we'll be able to close the gap, to, uh, decrease the numbers of children that are getting referred. And get everyone back so that triangle is, uh, right-sided.
So this would, would, would you, could I consider this like the lower twenty-five percent?
The lower twenty-five, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're moving on, sir.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve H nineteen, please.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. H twenty-four, Mr. Sturgis.
That's you again.
Doc, have we, uh, have we used, uh, these people before?
We have. The reason for the switch, uh, Mr. Sturgis, uh, I think it's, it, it bodes our children well to practice as they will play, so to speak. And I know Coach would appreciate that reference there. Um, this, uh, the second quote is lower, but the first quote allows our children to practice with, with the decimal calculator. That's the calculator that they'll see at the end of state testing. So my thought was that if they're exposed and practicing with this test to the teacher's formative, as well as on the district benchmark, that when it comes to state testing, they will be familiar with it as opposed to seeing it. Gives us a better opportunity. And that's the reason for the switch to four thousand dollars is because quote one, they can provide that. Quote two does not have that, and that's the difference in the price. But this is a renewal price. And this decimal calculator features a new feature that they brought in this year.
So you'll be able to use that on the test?
They can use that all the time, so they'll be familiar with, so when it comes to state testing, it won't be the first time they're seeing it.
Oh, wow.
So I just felt that that would be, the four thousand dollars would be a better investment on the front end, so that they're prepared and, and ready for that.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, we approve H twenty-four, please.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. H fifty-one?
Thirty-one, that's me.
Oh, y'all kinda skipped ya, sorry.
I just have a question about it. It, it's a thousand dollars a day, and I had already asked you a question. It's twenty-seven teachers that get the benefit of it for a total of forty thousand dollars. My question is, is it says the money comes out of school funds. Is that district funds, is that?
Yes, sir.
That, is that, it didn't, well, mine didn't say S R, so.
No, it didn't, no, it says S. Is it district?
Yeah, it just says, is it district funds? Is it South Park funds? Where's, where, where, it just says school funds, so I, I, I like to know.
It is district funds that's allocated to South Park for professional development.
So they're local.
So it's your, it's your monies. Okay, that was all, I wasn't real sure how it-
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion to accept thirty-one.
Accept.
Motion to second to accept H thirty-one, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, H fifty-one?
Fifty-one.
Man, I'm not gonna make good in the gym.
Actually, this is for the attorney, I guess we don't have to pay him extra on this one since he's in the board meeting.
Oh, man.
I'm just a joke, my brother, just a joke.
He's not joking.
I know.
I know, right?
This, I guess, this is all I had, was a piece of paper. Did, I guess, I, I was just asking, what is it?
Yeah, that's, uh, we, there's a claim that's been made and, and part of that, it's employee-related. I don't wanna get too much, they need to be in executive session, employee-related claims been made. And the request has been made for us to accept service on behalf of the district. Rather than going through a process, uh, that would require our service. And then possibly, depending on the circumstances, uh, that you could have to pay for that service also. It's, it's a formality, and if we need to discuss the particular matter, uh, we need to do that in executive session.
Gotcha. I'd like to make a motion, we approve, um, H fifty-one, please.
So, motion in the second, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Alright, Sally, will you excuse yourself? Okay, we're moving on to J one, personnel recommendations and separations. What's the pleasure of the board?
J one. Need a motion?
Make a, yeah, make a motion, we approve J one.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion in second, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. You can ask her to come back in if you want, y'all will, please. Mr. Sturgis, J two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, J two.
Could've just put your fingers in here.
I'd make you leave and go back and close the door.
At last month, I think, Ms. Lewis, I need to, maybe need to, oh, wait, let me see. No. Okay, here's what I have. On the academic interventionist, under the Title I budget. Is there one at every school, or just when the school requests a, I'll just call it a AI, cause it's a tongue tire for me?
Under, under Title I, every position is unique to that school, cause it's based on their needs and their data. And the school sets forth that Title I plan. So I can't say that everyone has it. But if they have Title I funds, then if that's what they need, they could request that in the amount.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Gotcha.
This Title I gets, you know, I don't touch Title I.
Okay, I got you, okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion, we approve, uh, A, J two, please.
Motion in the second, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. J four?
J four. I don't know who I need to address. Dr. Little or Ms. Hill? Or probably Mr. Sims.
You throw it at me.
Okay. I see S R funds will be used for this. I get that. S R funds are being used for a whole lot of things.
About thirty-five million dollars worth.
Uh, right. And we got a forty-six million dollar budget. I understand that. Okay, so if I am correct, how many SROs do we already have full-time?
That's five.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Um, the additional eight SROs. Can you tell me why they are needed?
I, I can.
Okay.
You can, you, you wanna hear from him or me?
It doesn't matter, sir.
Well, one of the things that we did, uh, you know, safety and security is always fundamental and-
Without a doubt.
With the, uh, I guess, rash, I don't, I don't know that, you know, we, we did a, we did a hard reboot and looked back over our processes, which, you know, were pretty sound with our response. Um, and we were asked to consider some of the things that we might, could add and do differently. Uh, quite frankly, when we did our safety audit, uh, we think our plans are incredible, uh, they're, they're very responsive, they're incredibly comprehensive. The only thing that it doesn't do is provide, uh, an SRO at every facility, which is a train. And we do have security in some places, but we don't have an SRO. Now, you know, Dwayne's very flexible, he's out and about, he goes to different schools, he, uh, and then we have a dedicated one for our high schools and our, our junior highs. But we don't have them for every building. Uh, in the event where we had to, uh, and we hope we never need to, by the way. Uh, but in the event we need a responder, we have one on-site at every school. So, uh, that's, that's the reason.
Okay. Um, with that comes cars. With that comes guns. With that, um, comes training. Um, are we gonna purchase cars? Because that's, that's gonna be added to it. How much are we gonna pay each SRO? Then you have to add fifteen percent more to what that is for their retirement. I, I just don't see it here, and, and I've been, and again, I agree with you, safety is the utmost important. Uh, we have safety here tonight, thank you, Chief Sims. Um, but I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the, the dollar amount, when the money runs out, then we've got nurses on, that's the money. We're gonna have SROs on this money. Then you're gonna look at the budget, then we just gave everybody a raise. And then, um, if, if my mind serves me correctly, and I, trust me, I've been wrong, just ask my wife. I've been wrong a lot of times in my life. This time, we don't have to dip into our cash stabilization fund. But, and please correct me when I go wrong, next year, there is a possibility that we may have to cut services. There is a possibility. So now we're talking about all of this that we're doing, but I, 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 I don't know how much all of this is gonna cost. Do, do, do we have any idea with the cars, are we gonna buy new cars?
Well, you know, I, I think, you know, if, if this is approved, I think-
Yes, sir.
And we get past that, then we'll reassess and then evaluate, make a determination there with, with the superintendent.
So, how can I approve something, I mean, just me personally, how can I approve something if, I don't know, we're gonna get cars? Are they gonna walk to work? Are they gonna carry their own gun?
What you're saying is, I don't wanna put words in the mouth, is that you're asking us to hire the individuals, but we're not approving you to buy vehicles.
Oh, absolutely.
They would have to come back to us to approve. So these people, like a teacher, drive their own car to work?
Couple, couple, couple things. One, uh, correct, if I'm wrong, the benefits and individuals are within this, the budget that was presented with the additional million six left over. So hopefully, we'll continue to be conservative with those dollars. And now openly stated, this is through your position. Board will have to make a decision at the end of the time where an S R, uh, is no longer with us. Uh, and there's a strong rumor- Two years. Uh, and, and hopefully, S R four will come and, and save us all. So, uh, with that being said, you're right, they do have to have equipment. One of the things we apply for annually is a COPS grant. Uh, that COPS grant covers, uh, our cost to outfit with uniforms and gear. At this point, we've had no discussion about cars, uh, to, to provide for these SROs.
And even with that, you know, let's say, let's say, they don't have vehicles. But one of the things that we'll do, SROs that, which I do on a daily basis right now, because of the elementary, you do not have vehicles to transport, because they don't have SRO. That's what I will do. So, you know, so that's what we add on that for vehicles, they will get transported. But to your point, will they possibly have to drive to work if that's an option, if vehicles are not included?
Okay, so the guns.
Yes, sir.
We, we, we provide cars to the six that we have now, correct?
Correct.
And we provide guns for the six we have now, correct?
Correct.
And we provide the equipment just in case the bulletproof goes through, I stand behind you. Correct?
Correct.
So will they have, besides the cars, will they have the same, um, or with-
All the equipment, absolutely. Now, the cars is on the home-
Oh, yeah, without the cars, I mean-
But the equipment is what-
With all the equipment, absolutely. The body armor, the guns, the whole nine yards.
But it, it, I mean, that's what, what the superintendent was saying goes in that COPS grant.
Correct. Per SRO on the M COPS grant, that's about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so we got ten thousand per, right?
Per.
So we got fifty thousand this last, sixty thousand the last time, this last time.
That has not been awarded at this time.
You have not?
It has been submitted, but it has been awarded every year up to now, it just hasn't been rewarded.
Chief Sims?
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Mm-hmm.
If the eight that you have-
The six.
They can be stationary at the school that they're at, at that, right? I mean, at the elementarys.
Yes.
They don't need to be necessarily in a patrol car.
Yeah, it's not, they're not buildings.
So, the way I set up is now, all SROs has at least three schools.
Alright.
And they'll go check on those schools.
Right.
That, that will eliminate the leaving a building unsecured, they'll check on the, the elementary school. And one of the things that you look at when you talk about the need for SROs, that if you look at Redwood, you look at South Park. That's seven to, that's seven to ten minutes response time. And all research will show you that between seven and ten minutes, God forbid, that's it. And with a high-capacity magazine, you're looking at a trap.
Right.
And most of the, the doors should be locked, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if the doors are colla- locked, then they come through the front door, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, the training would be needed within the twenty-four months they're here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're even, they're not even here, but maybe eighteen months, fifteen months out of the twenty-four?
So that'd be in that-
I say, they, I guess, they're basically on the, on the, on the property, fifteen of the twenty-four months they're here, do, do the training? Or is training, not in, is training after they go to, to, uh, once they finish the school they're in?
Yes, where the training works is if they're hired, you have up to one year to do an SRO basic class. And that class is usually done in the summer, so therefore, you won't, you will not pull them away from the school during the day. And some classes, they are actually offering them virtual.
Virtual, okay. So, the, um, security that we, well, I won't say, see, they are security, but they don't have, they don't tow guns.
They are unarmed, that's for sure.
Okay, do we need them anymore? So now you're tripled up, you, you're tripling your security, correct?
Well, you know, once again, we have to go back and, with, Dr. McGee and I have been discussing, but upon, if, if SROs are proven or whatever, we would have to go back. I can't really say that they are not a one hundred percent be eliminated, we might have to just downsize, because there's another piece in there with athletics.
But I'm, I'm speaking of the schools now, so we wouldn't need them in the schools.
I can't, we'll definitely have to reevaluate.
But you'll have the eight, eight where all, you'll have a security, you'll have a SRO at all the schools. So why would you need, need me sitting in the front door?
Well, you know, I, I wouldn't make that decision just by myself, we'd have to go back.
No, 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 I, 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 I guess I'm not-
The attorney thinks you're stepping.
Once we start getting, we're getting, right, the security issues that'll be in executive session, so we need to get into-
Point well taken, sir.
Security issues.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. In other words, we don't wanna give out our secrets. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Okay. I, 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 I will cease here then, and I, I, anyway, I'm just curious about the, 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 the cost. And I know it's, the money is there now, I get that. I'm, I, we're spending, and which we should, we're spending money because they gave it to us and told us if we don't spend it, they're going to take it back.
They're going to take it back.
I get that, I get that. I'm, I'm not, I'm just, the length and the, the amount and, and what we're going to have to, to provide is, is, is my ultimate goal right here. Okay, I'm, I'm done, done with that, thank you. Thank you, Chief Sims, thank you, Mr. Attorney, thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
I make a motion that we approve J. 4.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor? All opposed?
No, Sturgis.
Motion carries. Coach, you did say aye, right? Okay. Alright, we're going to move on to Dr. McGee. Hold in your chair, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Last month, I provided you with the legislative updates for the board policy. And a few of those, we have to make, y'all have to make a decision about. One, that deals with the monthly payroll, either make a decision on monthly or bi-monthly. And those policies are CEE, CGA, DJC, and CBA. Those all deal with payroll. And then also about the medical cannabis. We have to make a decision if we're going to, going to allow that on campus or not. So those are the two biggies that we'll need to, to make a decision on.
And I'd like to make a recommendation, we've done extensive investigation in all of these areas. First of which is the payroll process, monthly or bi-monthly. There is not a district that we have spoken to that is taking this on. There are additional costs that are a part of that. It would be my recommendation that we stay with the monthly. Board can, you know, direct us to do differently on that. And if I could go just address two and three together with the medications. We currently don't administer, you know, prescription drugs at that rate. We've talked with all of our nurses, with the particular medical cannabis being a part of that. We have no capacity to know how that's going to be done at this point. So my recommendation until we have more guidance, and we also reached out to multiple districts, and we don't have anybody that's not doing anything other than saying it's not allowed, and that's for adults and kids. So that's clarity on what I would like for us to do. But y'all are welcome to direct us and, and we'll, we'll take whatever y'all would like, whatever pleases the board. But you do need to make a decision for one, two, and three, so we can update our policies accordingly.
Question on one, have, the, the, the advantage of one doing the bi-monthly is, it's got, there's the additional cost. Have we been provided what the cost would be to know? Because, but even though there's a cost, it does help our teachers out. I mean, it's, they're getting paid twice a month versus once a month. And, you know, new teacher starts, they work 30 days before they get the first paycheck. So do we have a cost associated with, so we would understand that by choosing the option to do a bi-monthly payroll, what that cost would be to the district? I got my gym hat on right now.
Cassandra, I know we looked at, you're basically running two payroll departments at this point. So you would take the people that have to do the work that's currently in their work and double that. So we talked about extending the finance department by three or four employees at a minimum.
Yeah, and you get into the time of this of getting the paperwork in, you got 24 periods versus 12. So you're, you know, as of now, we get into the rut where we can't get the paperwork in and signed on time, you know, we can get the people paid for the month.
So how many people we have currently that process payroll?
Uh, two. Directly related to payroll.
So, because I run payroll for, I don't like payroll. But are we automated, all automated for payroll, all your hours are from a time clock?
Yes, it is.
And your salary, your teacher's salary is preloaded, so when you go to process payroll, if you're doing a bi-weekly or a monthly, you're basically pushing a button, those are all set up to just pay based on that period, correct?
Yeah. You know, because currently, you know, again, we run into situations where we can't get the paperwork in on time, and then that, that process, or the hand scan.
What kind of paperwork?
No.
Uh, types of signatures, or time sheets, those things. We have to call the departments or call the schools to get that process. Also with the hand scan, it doesn't work properly then, there's a manual, a manual process to do that. So again, you know, we run into those type issues and the additional cost that it would take to run the payroll. So everything.
So the one thing, I mean, one of the biggest things I hear from teachers is the fact that the hardships are that they're paid once a month. I mean, that's, that's one of the things I hear from them. And it would make it a lot easier on them to be able to pay twice a month, but I don't know that I'm getting a clear indication of what that cost is, so that we can determine as a board, if we want to take on that cost to allow and relieve a little bit of the burden to our, to our teachers and our staff by having a bi-weekly payroll. And I've worked for companies, the company I worked for, 100,000 employees, we process payroll weekly. I mean, you train people to get in that rhythm of what it is, and you also coach people who are not turning in time sheets properly on the proper process. I mean, it's, it's doable, but I don't know what the cost is.
Can I ask, why did the, why did the Senate give us this option, or even give us?
Because people complained about it.
So I agree, exactly, a lot of people complained that once a month, by enough time, you pay.
I got you, okay.
So a new teacher, or a teacher that moves into the district, they could have come from another district, or they, they basically have to work 30 days to get paid. And they already don't make a lot of money.
No district in the state does bi-weekly.
No, because they just approved this law.
Right.
They couldn't before.
None that we talked.
They couldn't before now, so it's not a fair statement to say none do it.
None, none are doing it this upcoming school year that we spoke to.
Okay, but that's just because the law was passed, everyone's trying to figure this out. So I think that's, that's irrelevant. I think it's important that we consider it, but that's just my personal opinion.
I believe I'm the only one in the room that have went through the, the, uh, two-week payoff in schools. It's, it, it's, it's going to be chaotic in a lot of things, because unless you hire more people, you have to hire more people.
Oh, no, no, that's why I was asking what the cost was.
And Jim, we're talking about now, we're talking about, that's no SRO money. That's, that's ours, you know, and it, you know, I would, I would want to be out front with that. You know, that, that's, that's going, that can be a headache with these.
Have anyone here, I've processed payroll for a company that was 700 employees, me and two other people. It's not hard. You put processes in place, you have deadlines with payroll, when time cards have to be submitted, and you, and you, and you get them in and you process payroll. I, I personally have processed payroll. Has anyone here processed payroll? Okay. For set, for 700 people, it was not hard. It was a lot of work, but it was not hard. But my point is, that's one comment that teachers make to me. I'd ask everyone on this board, if y'all decide you don't want to entertain this, to go ask every teacher you see, would they, wouldn't it be a lot easier on them as a hardship not to get paid once a month, but to get paid every two weeks? I would, I would beg you to ask that question to your teachers, but.
Ms. Lewis, if we, if we made the decision to go bi-monthly, would you be prepared to do that? With the school year starting in August, or is this not, so we would not be prepared to do that? What would be, can I finish? What would be the soonest you would be prepared to do that?
Well, you want to start a payroll cycle in the first of the school year, which is a July year.
Right.
July, and it was just passed, so, you know, I would rather wait to see what other schools are doing and going through that cycle as well. But again, you don't want to start mid-straight, you want to start in the first of the fiscal year.
So the soonest.
Not this, not.
So the soonest we could do it would be 23, 24 school year? Would be, so if we made the decision to vote on this, it wouldn't even be for this coming calendar school year?
Yeah, no, because you have to put those measures in place, like we have.
So that would give you a year to find people and to train people and to put, if we had to buy new computer systems or whatever, if you had to get different kind of swipe cards, whatever the systems are. Teaching the people in the school buildings how to operate, and for your people in your office. You're saying it would take a calendar year to do that?
Yes.
And Ms. Lewis? Ms. Lewis. Coach made a very valid point, and you, then you would have to tell us how many persons that you would need, what type of computer system that needs to be updated, upgraded. So now, you, you're talking dollars now and not cents on it. And Superintendent had mentioned that, and then you, you just get bigger back there in the bag with, with. And again, I understand what Mr. Pratt is saying, because my mom and dad, 50 years plus in the school system with, once a month. Okay, so I, I get the, now, when I worked at the bank, I got paid twice, which was good. I get that, I get that. But some people are accustomed to once a month, some people are accustomed to twice a month. I understand everything that's being said here tonight. My only problem is, is the budget. The budget is going to get, and excuse me to my, all of my English teachers, it going to get busted. And that's the wrong English, but I'm just going to use it where everybody can understand what I'm saying. And then we're going to go in the red. We go from the black to the red. Quick, fast, and in a hurry. And we've been in the red before, and it wasn't a pretty scene. You're holding your breath to see if you can pay the next bill. So I just hope this board take in consideration. Yes, we, we've got money right now, running out of every ear we can think about, we can do whatever we want to do at this particular time. But there's, it will come a time when judgment day hits, in my opinion. Now, I've been around money long enough to know. I look at my bank account and know there's come judgment time. So with that, thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Lewis, if you will, just inform us and just let us know as things progress over the next year. If there's some seminar you've been to and you have a better idea, you know, we'll always entertain it.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue on the once-a-month payroll. But in my motion, I would also like to have Ms. Lewis give us some information, give us maybe, if we can look at a dollar amount, what it would cost us and a process, what it would have to be, so that if we want to reconsider this, that we have the, all of that information in front of us, because obviously, we're on the late end of trying to make this change. If you're saying it can't even happen until the 2023, 23, 24 school year, then we need, we've got a year to get all that information, so that if we chose to change, that we are prepared to make that change in July of 2023.
And that was my initial question too, is when the whole process came up, we were interested, we did an investigation. I said, can we, I, I know we're not ready, I know we can't get this, can we start in December? She goes, uh, no.
So, I mean, I, I'd like that information, you know, way before July, so I mean, I think that that information needs to come to us in December. And then the board could make a motion to, you know.
Could you amend your motion to say that we revisit this in December?
In December.
With the information.
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at.
Currently, we're going to stay at 30 days or every month, but that we have that information in December, we'd make a decision so they could plan.
Right, because that gives you, exactly, that's what, that's what I'd like to see.
As part of that information, could you also provide us the current schedule of what payroll process is? When your people submit stuff, when it has to be approved, how long it takes you to process payroll? I'd like to see that, please.
Alright, so there's a motion on the floor to stay with the monthly payroll as it is and receive an update in December as to any changes that might happen. Along with that, provide this board with our current procedure and policy when it comes to processing payroll. Is that, did I get that right?
What would the cost of all the systems that would have to come into place?
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have, okay, all in favor? All opposed? Alright, that motion carries. So we have items two and three.
I make a motion that we do not approve medical marijuana in our school district.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
That we continue with the narcotics program that we already.
Alright, I have a motion and a.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. And number, item three? Is that in with that?
Same.
Okay, so that takes care of everything?
Yep, takes care of adulthood students, and we'll take the third option of both of those suggested policies to prohibit it.
Alright, so we are now at, where are we?
Housing review.
Yes.
And this is just review and information right now. On our school facilities rental policy, under section six, under, under rental charges, the school board will renew and revise if necessary these rate schedules at the first meeting in July every year. So I wanted to make sure you guys have this, and if there are any changes or recommendations, we will come back to you with those recommendations and the justifications if, if, if needed. But as you can see right now, we, we have a schedule for those rentals, cafeteria, gymnasium.
Does that schedule also include if there's a cleaning, like if someone uses our facility and we have to have custodian staff come through and clean again, does it include, I mean, you're renting the space, but it also needs to be returned back to use?
Security janitorial.
Yeah, the return to use, it needs to be ready, like we're ready to start school next day, and we shouldn't have to incur that cost, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I make a motion that we go into closed session to set the agenda.
May I ask one question, Ms. Bullitt, please, before, no, 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 you didn't see me, I apologize. I was trying to wait till they got through talking before, I, I apologize. But I, I do have, I just have one question on the, on the medical marijuana, what we just voted for. By law, if someone has a seizure, whatever, whatever, if we have, if we have a student that has to have it at this juncture, what we just voted on, they cannot have that on school ground.
Like anywhere than they can have any other prescription in our building.
Am I correct?
If there's an exception, that's always come to our office and.
So there is a possibility, but we.
Always a possibility, the board can make a decision at any time.
I, I, I just want to get clarification on when somebody asks, if, let's say, their special needs child needs this to survive.
That they can, they can provide it to them before they come on campus?
No, but then, but they may need it during the day, because, you know, they, they, some people will act up during the day. But I agree with what you're saying, use it during the day or before or after is, is a, is a very way of, a good way of saying that we, we hope that happens, but you know, there are people like me who will cut up in class. And so I'm, I just want to make sure that we, I understand, so when somebody asks me in the grocery store, I want to make sure to say that the answer is no, period.
Prohibited, prohibited unless it shows back up at this board, because based on what you just voted on, you're the only people that have the authority to do anything other than prohibit it. But I will say this, we're going to keep our, just, just like the double payroll thing, we're talking about something that just occurred. We don't even have dispensaries or anybody authorized, I don't know who's going to prescribe all this stuff. But what we'll do, as we get more information, we'll inform this board, we'll bring stuff back to y'all.
Great, okay.
And y'all have the opportunity to change, but at this point, we don't even have any mechanism to.
But I mean, we already have a narcotics policy, and this just follows the same guidelines as the narcotics policy.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure, I just, I want to get clarification, that's all, thank you.
Real quick, Jim, I'll just, so also, though, we have, there might be someone who needs other medication other than medical marijuana, that we're not allowing them to be administered on school already too. So I mean, that's, that's an argument, not an argument, but something else to point out, Jim, is someone asked us, is that, you know, we have a policy for administering, you know, medication, and basically, it doesn't prohibit, it prohibits any type of medication for being administered on school grounds, not just medical marijuana.
Okay.
We just, we just don't have enough information to make a, a decision right now.
Okay, I just want to make, I, I just need clarification, sir.
You're good. You said?
I make a motion that we go into closed session to set the agenda for executive session.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion is approved.